We are calling to order the meeting of the Arlington Select Board for Monday, January 4th, 2021. I know everyone is happy to say 2021 and hope for a much better year this year than we had in the last. As a preliminary matter, this is John Hurd, Select Board Chair. Permit me to confirm that all members in persons anticipated on the agenda are present and can hear me. Before I do so, I'll note that Select Board Member Curro is not feeling well tonight, so he will not be joining us. So, members, when I call your name, please respond in the affirmative. Diane Mahan?
Yes, thank you.
Steve Decourcy?
Yes.
Len Diggins?
Yes.
And staff, when I call your name, please respond in the affirmative. Adam Chapdeline?
Yes.
Doug Heim?
Yes.
And Board Administrator Ashley Marr is participating remotely. Good evening. This meeting of the Arlington Select Board is being conducted remotely, consistent with Governor Baker's executive order of March 12th, 2020, due to the current state of emergency in the Commonwealth, given the outbreak of the novel coronavirus. In order to mitigate the transmission of the virus and reduce risk of COVID-19 illness, we have been advised and directed by the Commonwealth to suspend public gatherings, and as such, the Governor's order suspends the requirement of the open meeting law to have all meetings in a publicly accessible physical location. Further, all members of public bodies are allowed and encouraged to participate remotely. The order, which you can find posted with the agenda materials for this meeting, allows public bodies to meet entirely remotely, so long as reasonable public access is afforded, so that the public can follow along with the deliberations of the meeting. Ensuring public access does not ensure public participation unless such participation is required by law. This meeting will feature public comment. Even if members of the public do not provide comment, participants are advised that people may be listening who do not provide comment, and those persons are not required to identify themselves. For this meeting, the Select Board is convening by Zoom, as posted on the town's website, identifying how the public may join. Please note that this meeting is being recorded and that some attendees are participating by video conference. Accordingly, please be aware that other folks may be able to see you and take care not to screen share your computer. Anything that you broadcast may be captured by the recording. Please also take care to adjust your screen or device name if you would like to speak. In order for us to recognize speakers appropriately and develop accurate minutes, it is helpful for participants to see your full first and last name when calling upon you rather than a nickname. All of the meeting materials for this meeting, except any executive session materials, are available on the Novus Agenda Dashboard. We recommend that members in the public follow the agenda as posted on Novus unless the chair notes otherwise. We are now returning to the first item on our agenda. Before we do so, permit me to cover some ground rules for effective and clear conduct of our business and to ensure accurate meeting minutes. I will introduce each speaker on the agenda. After they conclude their remarks, the chair will go down the line of members, inviting each by name to provide any comments, questions, or motions. Please hold until your name is called. Further, please remember to mute your phone or computer when you're not speaking. Please remember to speak clearly in a way that helps generate accurate minutes. For any response, please wait until the chair yields the floor to you and state your name before speaking. If members wish to engage in colloquy with other members, please do so through the chair, taking care to identify yourself. This meeting will feature opportunities for the public comment on certain agenda items. For comment on a public comment after members have spoken, I, as the chair, will afford public comment opportunities as follows. I'll first ask members of the public who wish to speak to identify their names and addresses only. Once the chair has a list of all public commentators, I will call on each by name and afford three minutes for any comments. Please keep in mind that all participants and members of the public must be recognized by the chair before speaking. Finally, each vote taken tonight will be a roll call vote. All right, and that takes us to our consent agenda. We have meeting of minutes, December 21st, 2020. Meeting of minutes, September 21st, 2020. Joint meeting with the Arlington Redevelopment Board. Meeting of minutes, December 9th, 2020. Joint meeting with the Arlington Housing Authority. And for approval, Arlington Public Art Youth Banner Initiative on Massachusetts Avenue in Arlington Center, April 1st, 2021 to July 1st, 2021. Adrian Arch Arlington Commission for Arts and Culture. Mr. Decourcy?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chairman. I have a comment on number five, so I'm going to move approval of items two through four, but I'd ask that number five be removed from the consent agenda.
Mrs. Mahan?
Second.
Ms. Diggins, any comments?
No comments, thank you.
All right, Attorney Heim?
Mrs. Mahan?
Yes, thank you.
Mr. Decourcy?
Yes.
Mr. Diggins?
Yes.
Mr. Hurd?
Yes.
unanimous vote.
All right, so that takes us separately to item number five for approval Arlington Public Art Youth Banner Initiative on Massachusetts Avenue in Arlington Center, April 1st, 2020 to July 1st, 2021. Mr. Decourcy?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and I'm going to move approval. My concern in this was the timeframe that was listed in the application. It's listed as a request from April through July 1st, April 1 through July 1, and I'm concerned about the month of June, both in terms of Pride Month and also last year we hung banners in Arlington Center and throughout the town because of the Arlington High School graduation, and that may be the case again this year. So, at least for purposes of this approval, I'm concerned about approving these banners for the month of June. So, I'd like to move approval for the period of April through May 31st, and we can revisit it later if we need be, but I feel more comfortable with that timeframe.
Okay. It doesn't look like we, I don't see Adrian on the list, and I don't know if anyone else was presenting for them. So, I will turn to the board. Mrs. Mahan?
I'd like to second that, and I would just note in the application for the temporary banner for the Arlington Commission for Arts and Culture, they indicate that the Youth Banner Initiative event dates are April to May. So, I think Mr. Decourcy's motion, which I do second, to have the banner from April 1st to May 31st, the 31 days of May 30 or 31, I would definitely second that.
I didn't tell you, but I couldn't be 100% sure. Mr. Diggins?
100% sure. There are 31 days in May, and then I'm fine. I'm fine with this.
All right, so we have a motion by Mr. Decourcy for approval, seconded by Mrs. Mahan with the amended dates through May 31st, 2021. Attorney Heim?
Mrs. Mahan?
Yes, thank you.
Ms. Diggins?
Yes.
Mr. Decourcy?
Yes.
Mr. Hurd?
Yes.
unanimous vote.
All right, that takes us to licenses and permits for approval. Food vendor license, Mariucci Japanese food in Delhi, 1398 Massachusetts Avenue, Joshua Nakama. Do see Mr. Nakama with us?
Sorry. Can you, can you hear me?
Yes, we can, and I apologize if I mispronounce the name of the business.
Not at all.
If you could just introduce yourself, tell us a little bit about your business that you're looking to open.
Hi, yeah, my name is Joshua Nakama. I'm the manager with Fujimart Corporation doing business as Maruichi Japanese Food and Deli. We're really excited to bring our Japanese grocery store Arlington. We hope it'll be a welcome and pleasant addition to the Arlington community. During our research, we found out that Arlington actually has one of the highest percentages of Japanese populations in Massachusetts outside of the Boston Summerville area. And so, we really think that helping support these immigrant residents and also kind of become a part of the larger community will really be a boon to the Arlington area.
Thank you. You're welcome. I'll turn to the board for any questions, comments, or motions. Mr. Diggins?
I will motion and approve of the license, and yeah, welcome. It's a good, I think it'll be great to have your establishment in the Heights. That's a, yeah, it's a really good location in the Heights. Could think you certainly use your cuisine. Just a curiosity question, Red Bean Mochi?
We will have that, yeah.
Excellent. I'll be there many times. Thank you.
Great.
And Mr. Decourcy?
Yeah, I'll second the motion, and just if I could add, Mr. Chairman, subject to the conditions contained within the reports, and I do note there are a number of conditions here, and I think there are a number of things that need to be done, but subject to those conditions, I'd move approval. Second, Mr. Diggins' motion, rather.
Thank you. Mrs. Mahan?
I want to say welcome to Mr. Nakama, and very good research on your target market as well as other ethnicities. Mr. Decourcy touched on my first point. I was going to raise subject to conditions and comments regarding from our other town departments. And the other thing I really wanted to kind of give kudos to you on was your maintenance program. That's something that I and my colleagues pay particular attention to, especially where we have businesses and residences, sometimes close together, sometimes not. I don't have a single question for you on your maintenance program of what is missing from there, because you have everything and a little more than some. So, I am confident that you're going to be a great partner, business owner here in Arlington, and I wish you nothing but success, and thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. And just thank you for choosing Arlington. I live in that side of town, so I'm excited to patronize your business once you get going and get to follow up on what Mrs. Mahan said. We do appreciate the thoroughness of your application. You know, our application. When we get food vendor applications, they're all over the spectrum, and you know, the information provided, and you obviously took a lot of time on your application. We appreciate that. All right, so we have a motion subject to condition from Mr. Diggins, seconded by Mr. Decourcy, Attorney Heim?
Mrs. Mahan?
Yes, thank you.
Mr. Decourcy?
Yes.
Mr. Diggins?
Yes.
Mr. Hurd?
Yes.
unanimous vote.
Thank you. All right, thank you, Mr. Nakama. Forward to your business. Alrighty, that brings us to our open forum. Excepting unusual circumstances, any matter presented for consideration of the board shall neither be acted upon nor decision made the night of the presentation in accordance with the policy under which the open forum was established. It should be noted that there is three-minute time limit to present a concern or question. So, at this time, if you would like to speak at our open forum, if you can use the raise hand function on your Zoom application. Don't believe we have anyone calling in. Mr. Chapdeline?
There are no hands raised right now, Mr. Chair.
All right, and that will close our open forum. So, that takes us to traffic rules and order and other business. Item number seven for approval, advance of funds in lieu of borrowing. Our treasurer, Billis Marshall.
I think she's on our A O now.
Yeah. Good evening.
Good evening.
I appreciate your putting me on the agenda for this evening. The submitted these forms for your consideration. They are a form from the Department of Revenue, Division of Local Services, that, and we are requesting advance of funds in lieu of borrowing. As I noted, we are planning, we're in the process of putting together the bond issue that we will have in February. The sale is planned for February 18th, and I will be back before the Select Board on the 22nd to have you act on that bond sale. The two projects that are going to be included, two of the projects that are going to be included in that borrowing are the first installment of the Department of Public Works project for renovation and construction, and the amount that is requested in advance of the borrowing is $300,000, which is needed by the Department of Public Works for the OPM costs and some of the bid preparation documents, and those funds will be needed before we receive the money for the bond issue. The money will be received early in March, before the middle of March, but we're looking to use those funds, the 300,000 of the 21 and a half million that will be planned for that borrowing, and spend those before, we're looking for a transfer of those funds this week, and we'll spend them before the bond issue proceeds are received. Once they're received, then we will refund. We will transfer the money back so that it is to the general fund. The second project that we're looking for, another $300,000 in advance of the borrowing, is for the work that's being done out front of the town hall. All of those parts for making the town hall more accessible and safe are expected to be completed shortly, and so, we will, are looking to use $300,000, which is the total amount that will be included in the bond issue in February. The state requires that if we're going to borrow in advance of the borrowing, if we're going to get an advance before the borrowing, then we need to demonstrate the balances that we have on hand. The unappropriated free cash is $5,416,980, and we only need 600,000, so we're looking for you to sign off on that and approve this, please.
All right, thank you. I will turn to the board for any questions, comments, or motions. Mrs. Mahan?
First, I'd like to move approval, and I have two questions regarding the following agenda item about opportunity to refinance bond issues as of August 2010. I'm assuming that, or am I correct, this agenda item doesn't fall within our next board agenda item, so that would not be applicable, or is it in terms of being able to refinance it?
It does not apply. They're separate issues. These are in advance of the borrowing that we have planned. The refunding, which is next, is maybe done at the same time, but it doesn't affect these funds.
Okay, thank you. And my second question would be, these advanced funds that are available, I guess, under restricted funds? What exactly is that unrestricted funds? Like, if you had to look on, if I asked Eta Cody, our comptroller, you know, where are the restricted funds? Is it free cash or somewhere else?
It's unappropriated free cash. So, we have some free cash that was appropriated for the budget for this year, which is being used to pay the budgetary costs, and these are not appropriated. Did I answer your question?
If you know off the top of your head, how much is the allocation to available unrestricted funds? Is it just the amount of these two projects? Is it close to the amount of these two projects, or is it something else?
I'm not sure I understand the question. I'm sorry. We-
Billis, I can jump.
All right.
So, free cash was certified this year at $11,318,368. Though free cash is, from an accounting point of view, not exactly what would be termed undesigned fund balance. From a conceptual point of view, it's close to the same amount. So, functionally, functionally, you could think about this as being called an internal borrowing, where these funds exist in the town's coffers. We will be borrowing for them, but before we borrow, we'll take them from the existing coffers, be able to expend them, and then when we borrow the money via a bond, put them right back into the town coffers, that they're impacted, they're not impacted at all.
Last question, I promise, Mr. Chair. When this funding comes back, does it go to free cash or general fund, or they're both the same thing?
It becomes redeposited in the general fund.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chair. And Mr. Chapdeline?
Mrs. Decourcy?
Yeah, I'll second Mrs. Mahan's motion, and thank you, Ms. Marshall, for the explanation on the two borrowings and clarifying for me what each one was being used for.
Thank you. Mrs. Diggins?
I saw makes perfect sense to me. I'm glad we have the funds that we can do this. It just seems like an exercise in efficiency, so great, thanks. Happy to approve it.
All right. Attorney Heim, we have a motion for approval by Mrs. Mahan, seconded by Mr. Decourcy.
Mrs. Mahan?
Yes, thank you.
Mr. Decourcy?
Yes.
Mr. Diggins?
Yes.
Mr. Hurd?
Yes.
unanimous vote.
Thank you, and that takes us to item number eight on our agenda for discussion. Arlington refunding opportunity. Our town treasurer, again, Mrs. Marshall?
Thank you. This is an opportunity that comes to us on occasion. These, this was a $7,258,000 bond issue in August of 2010, and as you may know, bond issues have a period of time where there is an opportunity to refund or refinance them, and so, Hilltop, who is our financial advisor, is looking at that analysis and will continue to be reviewing it and investigating it. But what would be eligible for refunding is about 40% of that original issue, so, which is about $2,945,000. Those are items that were within that borrowing that have a bond life of, some of them are five more years, and three of them have 10 years remaining on them. And so, given the current interest rates that we're seeing at this point in time, it appears that we could reduce our debt service over the remaining term of the bond for 10 years in about a range right now of $250,000. So, they are looking at the numbers, and we'll look at them up until we sell bonds in February to make sure that we will, in fact, save money, and there has, it has to meet a certain threshold. We have to save more than 3% of the debt service that we, the bonds are currently issued at. And so, we are working with Hilltop to make sure that all of the legal requirements are met by the town, and the tax requirements can be met, so we will review that with bond counsel. And then, this will come back to you in February when the planned bond issue for this year comes to you.
Thank you. All right, Mr. Diggins?
I will move approval of this request. And once again, it makes sense. I would expect in a good department like ours to be on top of situation like this. It's amazing, though, that coming out of the economic crisis of 2008 with depressed interest rates, we would have an opportunity 10 years later, I mean, at lower rates, to refinance. Being the, what makes this a good opportunity for us is a really bad economy situation, so let's do it. Let's hope things improve for all of us in the upcoming years.
Hey, Mrs. Mahan?
I will definitely second Mr. Diggins' motion. My only questions would be the municipal bonds, the actual number that this is based on, is it the $2,945,000, or is it the $7,258,000 approximately?
Mrs. Marshall?
The 60% of the bond has already been paid off, and so, some of them had shorter terms. Some of them had seven years, some of them had five years, some of them had 10 years. And so, in fact, we just paid three of the issues, I mean, three of the items within that issue. So, the amount that remains outstanding is the $2,945.
Okay, thank you, and am I correct by doing my very limited math in terms of five and 10 years that the bonds originally issued in August 2010? I think you said one has five years and or three have 10 years or more. Am I correct that that's the two remaining sell items to calculate, and are those all town municipal bond projects or town and school?
They are town and school. There are
Yeah, I'm just doing the math, so if it was bond issue in 2010, we're in 2020, at least one has five more years, so that would be a 25-year and or three, 10 more years, so that'd be a 30-year bond. So, we're talking about 25- and 30-year bonds that are left bond issue?
They were authorized in 10, and they terminate in 2030, so there are 20-year bonds and 15-year bonds that remain. And it, there is no exempt debt in here. It's all taxable, but well, general funded.
Okay, and thank you for answering my questions. I'm just trying to definitely have my head around it, and I understand that we'll also be taking another vote in February, so if I have any other questions, I'll follow up with our treasurer and/or our Select Board Member, former FinCom member. Get educated that way and not at a meeting, so I appreciate the leeway in allowing me to ask these questions and get the answer. I definitely do appreciate it.
Thank you. And Mr. Decourcy?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So, question, Ms. Marshall, on the refunding bonds, and they will be at a lower interest rate, but what will the term of those bonds be?
I don't know that. I think it's the same term, but I, that's part of the analysis that they run, is to determine what the numbers will look like, and over the term for which we will be able to reduce the debt service, and the bond holder will safely protect it. So, they will be running those numbers, and as we get closer to the bond issue, we'll know whether we're, the bond issue that's planned for the 18th, we will know whether we can pull the trigger on this or not.
Okay, great, and thank you very much, and I appreciate that that will be part of the analysis. So, they, I think it's great to reduce interest rates, but at the same time, I'd like to see what the savings are if we're extending term dramatically.
I don't think the intent is to extend it, but-
No, okay, that's thank-
All right, and thank you, and thank you for your explanations. So, Attorney Heim, we have a motion for approval by Mr. Diggins, seconded by Mrs. Mahan?
Mrs. Mahan?
Yes, thank you.
Mr. Decourcy?
Yes.
Mr. Diggins?
Yes.
Mr. Hurd?
Yes.
unanimous vote.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, and thank you, Mrs. Marshall. All right, so item number nine on our agenda is vote. Police Civilian Advisory Board Study Committee Select Board Designee. Can we put this on our agenda to get following on this? Attorney, have you been, I think there were questions that had been posed to me, whether or not this was an, if they had to be a Select Board Member or a designee that we chose?
So, the way the vote is articulated, it does allow for a designee.
So the way the vote is articulated, it does allow for a designate as set forth by the select board. It's, it's not really an appointment. It's a slight distinction between an appointment and a designate. So in theory, you could, for example, designate Ms. Kripelka if she was able, because she's been your pro temp in other circumstances. When you're electing a new board. But the, the, the base ideas is clearly to have it be a member of the select board or some designate of the select board who would represent the board itself in this function.
All right. And just turn right to the board here and Mrs. Mahan.
I guess I would just note that the proponents of this committee designated the member of the select board or its designate town council and the police chief are all ex officio non voting members. And from, as the chair has noted, from the way that I interpreted the language around this, that the select board member or its designate would basically be the administrative person to schedule the first meeting. And at that meeting, the then committee members, which include the non, three non voting ex officio members, as well as the remaining voting members would call a structural meeting to appoint who should do that going forward. So I guess unless I hear anything from one of my colleagues that I would just be concurrent with past practice and appoint Mrs. Kripelka as our designate for the purpose of solely doing the administrative task to set up the first meeting, which as a result of that meeting, the voting members will vote each other in terms of moving forward. And either Mrs. Kripelka or someone designated from the select board office will continue on in a very minimalist role with no voting authority as well as no longer after the first meeting, any oversight on the administration, functional administration of the meeting. So unless one of my colleagues, I'm going to look to see if anyone raises their hand, wants to be the designate as a non voting member to basically do the administrative stuff to set up the first meeting. My motion would be to nominate Mrs. Kripelka.
Mr. Corsi.
Yeah, I'll second Mrs. Mahan's motion.
Mr. Higgins.
Sounds good to me. A comment, a first comment. Thank you.
And that works for me. So attorney high, we have a motion by Mrs. Mahan, seconded by Mr. De Corsi.
Mrs. Mahan.
Sorry, I was just texting Mrs. Falcone my condolences. Yes.
Mr. De Corsi.
Yes.
Mr. Diggin.
I'll text her back. Congratulations. Yes.
Mr. Hurt.
Yes.
unanimous vote.
Thank you. All right. So this takes us to item number 10 on our agenda. So this is a presentation by Calix Peak. Just a little bit for the background on how this agenda item came on. A few months back, we had a few presentations regarding our last remaining community host agreement. Or, you know, we can give as many community host agreements as we want. There's only one special permit available. We did not approve either of the community host agreements. In the time since then, we've had, I've had a few conversations with council from Calix Peak. And I know they've done some community outreach and they just wanted an opportunity to come and present to us. You know, what if any progress they've made? And then after that, you know, it, we'll, we'll turn to the board to determine what, if any motion they want to take. We may, may take no action whatsoever tonight. We may set up a, a timeframe as to what, where we want to go with the community host agreement process, or we can take a motion on it. Before I do so, before I promote Calix Peak, are there any board members that would like to speak on this before we get from the from the applicants? Mrs. Mahan.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chair. I, I, I just would state that when we open the process for the community, C H A, I can't think of what the acronym is for. For these establishments, we afforded each applicant over two hours to make their presentation. And my only concern is that by engaging in this process, we're setting a precedent that when we take a vote and it does not go with, for an approval, that this could be a way to sort of circumvent the process, also not affording the opportunity for any one or others that also were not successful to come before the board like this. But I, I, I am guided by the chairman's representation that we will hear from Calix Peak. Is that right? Yeah, Calix Peak here tonight. But I really would like to stress that of the over two hour presentation, about an hour usually for each of the applicants is on the subject matter that they want to present. I do not want to go through another hour. I would appreciate a very brief, a three minute or less presentation from Calix Peak. And my intention would be not to vote to reconsider our vote and just, I'm not making this motion, but I just want to let my colleagues know, you know, where my head, mind is at, that it would just be a, a motion to receive their information and encourage them at any future date when we open up the process for the one remaining license, which is a privilege. It's not a, a right to anyone that, that's when they should go to present more in-depth information. So I'm not sure of the conversation, Mr. Hurt, that you've had with them. But I, I have read the memorandum and 42 page study contained therein. And I, I just don't want to, I'm hoping this won't be 15, 20, 30 minute presentation. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other additional comments? Mr. Chaplin.
Thank you, Mr. Hurt. I just wanted to share as the board and those in attendance know, Mr. Kuro was unable to join the meeting tonight. But he had asked me in lead up to the meeting to request of the Arlington Police Department. And he calls for response for congregating at Nora Brown Park, Patty Sims Park or Hills Hill. I've not been able to collect those reports yet, but he did want me to say it on the record that he had made that request.
All right, if we can promote attorney Daxino. And I don't see anyone additional.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes.
I think Victoria Ierton is also from Calix.
Yep.
It is not showing up on the attendee list, Peter.
He texted me that he was on, but.
I, I did see his name earlier. He's, he's not there anymore.
There are two Victoria Iertens. Is it possible that he isn't on under her account?
Yeah, he would be under his own.
That one just disappeared. It's his picture.
But that's his picture.
Okay.
So Adam, do you want to, there's another Victoria Ierton in the attendees. All right. So attorney Daxino, if you could, my thought was if you could just take about five minutes to just update us as to, you know, what it is you, you wanted to present to the board and what you've done in the past couple of months. And then we'll turn to the board for any questions and then the board will have a brief discussion after that.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chairman and to the board members. I'll, I'll do my best to stay within that five minutes. Just for the record, I'm not an attorney. I just want to, yeah, no, I just, just so I'm not misleading.
That's a good thing.
But I appreciate the time and I, I appreciate the members' comments. So I'll keep it brief. We don't have a lot to expand on, just given, you know, a five minute time window. Our cover letter covered pretty in depth what we sought to present to the board tonight. So maybe just by way of where we understand to be in the process and, and what may be appropriate as, you know, to consider for the board to consider. You know, when we attended both of the meetings, the board gave us feedback, as we mentioned in our letter, relative to traffic concerns. So we went out and we hired a firm to do the work that we thought the board would need to further consider this matter. So that was the, really the purpose. I was just in response to some of the comments made by the board during prior meetings. And then additionally, you know, the board wanted to get some insight onto community feedback. I, I do want to draw one line on the community feedback if I could. The community feedback was incredibly targeted based on people who we were able to determine who have been active in the community do, through different initiatives. It was not a broad-based community outreach meeting in the same way you would do it under the CCC regulations. I just want to be clear about that, that it wasn't like we posted it in the paper or sent letters to abutters. The main reason for that is under the CCC's administrative order, number one, we would need permission from the board before we conducted that scale of a meeting. So under that administrative order, which was enacted due to COVID, we couldn't just go and do it on our own. So I just want to be clear that there was a reason that broad-based outreach wasn't conducted in that same way that we would normally do it for a community outreach meeting. And that we were, we limited it in scope to, you know, targeted outreach with people who we were able to determine were active in the community. So I just want to put the right point on the community outreach and not over, you know, overstate what, what our efforts are there. But where we understand the process is the, the, the select board has this matter open. They have two applicants in front of them. I, I don't remember the board taking a motion to close it. There is another, based on your, under, under the 20% rule, there's another, you know, license that ultimately would be issued in, in Arlington. It could go to anybody at any time. We all recognize that and I, I certainly appreciate that. But we thought, given the 2,000 foot buffer issue, that property wasn't really workable based on the feedback we had heard. And based on the feedback, we thought that our property was still workable if we're able to answer some questions. So that was the reason we made the rest, request for reconsideration to the board. We're still hopeful the board would consider that in some way. And maybe given the members' comments previously, maybe a middle ground would be the board authorize us to conduct a community outreach meeting. We could do that in accordance with the CCC regulations administrative order, which would give the board a greater sense of the feedback from the, the abutters specifically, and we would notice it in the paper, so on and so forth. So I, I, I can't imagine the town would open this process a, a third time, but certainly it could. So we were just hopeful that, given we've participated in both rounds now, and we've had multiple locations based on the zoning requirements. One in the first round was within a 2,000 foot buffer, so we couldn't use it. And then this property, which appears to comply with the zoning, we're hopeful to continue the discussion with the board. And without expanding on the 44 page memo and, and being respectful of the members' comments, I thought maybe us, the board authorizing us to conduct a community outreach meeting would be a middle ground to give the board further information to consider before it made a decision one way or the other. But with that, I hope I stayed within five minutes and I appreciate the time and happy to answer any questions relative to the memo we did submit.
And we'll turn to the board for any questions. And then, once we get through the question portion, will the board amongst ourselves will have a discussion about where we go from here. Uh, Mr. Higgins.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. And so appreciate you coming back. I appreciate your continuing to work this issue and our conversations. I, I just have some, some questions regarding the traffic analysis, and these are more curiosity questions. So the, I, I understand the traffic counts were conducted on December, either 3rd or 10th. This year, you know, so any indication as to whether the, the traffic patterns were different than they were a year ago? Cause we are doing, we're in a pandemic. I know that the other two prime time points were quite a bit in the past to me. But any sense as to how reliable or indicative those numbers are of what we might have if we return somewhat to normal?
That's a great question. I appreciate it. One, the traffic count data was based on the historical data. And the engineer said the data was within what is considered an acceptable timeframe to still use. So the onsite assessment, the reason we took that other step is board members had specifically raised the concern about queuing at the traffic light. And the traffic engineer said, well, the only way for us to figure that out is we have to go stand there and watch and see what happens. So you see the full assessment where they literally counted every car. That, that data was used solely to assess the queuing. And to your point, Mr. Diggins, yes, it could queue more, maybe at a busier time or, or less at a slower time. So certainly we would need to consider that. But the traffic study data was based on those, that's the, that historical data. So two data points used for two different purposes. And the, the queuing, the reason we had the engineers go onsite and do the queuing was, was in direct response to a member's question about how the queuing of that light may affect the site. And that's why we included our memo that they recommended, they being the traffic engineers, recommended we make the east entrance, entrance, entry only. And the west entrance exit only. And that, in their minds, would alleviate any of the queuing concerns because the traffic never backed up so much as to block that sent second exit. So that would allow people to come out and turn left and get in line at the light. So two different data points used for different things. Hopefully that clears that up.
Yeah. Well, I guess the, the question of, of the chair is, is, is that we do think the, I guess I have to get my directions, think through my directions. Having not really thought through the directions, the east, west. Do you think the queuing would be more of a problem if the traffic were heavier?
Mr. Chair, through you if I could. Based on the historical traffic counts, they thought the queuing was representative of what they would normally expect to see. But we all have to acknowledge the fact that it is COVID. There could be less people traveling. So we're just being respectful of that. But they felt the data they got, they collected was a, a good sample size for us, for them to determine whether or not the west entrance gets blocked. And if you're looking at the site, Mr. Diggins, it's the one to the left. So they'll, they exit further from the light. And, and so the entire time they were there, I believe that, that entrance never was blocked. And we would look, have to look back to the report, but from my memory, I don't think it was ever blocked during that time. So even if you added a few cars, most likely it wouldn't be blocked. And even at that, it would only impact people coming out of there and turning left. If, if in fact, that by creating an entrance exit, people coming out and turning left would only, would, would be the people having to wait. It wouldn't affect people coming in and getting off of the street.
Right. And I'll just make one more comment. And this is maybe somewhat educational to my colleagues and anyone else that watches this. So I have been doing some, been become a lot, a bit more enlightened as to the, the work that IT does. The Institute for Traffic Transportation Engineers. And, and it was interesting looking back at some of their older data, be that the amount of traffic that they predicted did not emerge. Being and it seems to be a bit of an issue with certain kinds of locations, certain places, with certain kinds of density. And I think me, where, where we're looking at it in Arlington, it might be one of those sorts of, of places. So, so, so it, uh, it, and also one of the reasons for a lot of times the, the car traffic not materialized as they expected is that they don't take into account properly other modes, being like walking, bicycling and whatever. So I just point that out. And, and for, and if, if you drive a lot, I, I, I pretty much do transportation, public transportation and walking. To what extent is queuing even a problem? I mean, so it's like, let's say it does back up. I mean, does it really make it hard for people to insert themselves into traffic? I used to drive, I mean, and it was like, well, you might have to wait and have someone like let you in. But that's about the extent of it. Is there anything more serious? Does it increase the chances of accidents or, or something else negative?
Mr. Chairman, if I could, through you, the, the, the concern on queuing, Mr. Diggins, was we didn't want anybody backed up onto the road. Mr. Chairman, if I could, through you, um, the, the, the concern on queuing, Mr. Higgins, was we didn't want anybody backed up onto the road. So if for some reason somebody couldn't get out, that may prevent somebody else from getting in, and that would create a traffic concern. And so with the proposal of creating an entrance only and an exit only, that would mean no one leaving would be blocking somebody from entering. So anybody queuing on, would be onsite and not on the road. So we've now moved, so to your point, if somebody couldn't get out for some reason, all that means is they'd be stuck in our parking lot. Uh, the purpose of having the entrance and exit was to keep everybody coming in off of the road, not having, uh, any backup. But I also agree that as these facilities have opened across the state, they're not quite seeing the traffic issues that they anticipated. But nonetheless, that was the reason for that approach. And of course, we'd work through that with the planning board.
Yeah.
You know, should this.
I appreciate that. Thanks for the three, four answers. I'm done.
Thank you.
Mr. Corsi?
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Uh, thank you, Mr. DeGastino for the presentation. I don't have any questions on what was being presented and, and, um, I can reserve comments for our, our reconsideration or our discussion after questions are made.
Yep. Mrs. Mahan?
Um, um, thank you, Mr. Chair and, um, Mrs. DeGastino. And I, you, you're certainly representing, um, Calix Peak, um, as diligently and above and beyond as possible. But I, I just want to point out that the board held hearings on the, um, HCA, um, and we, when we made a decision, it was an, an up or down decision. It wasn't, we need more information from you. The point that you're raising here tonight was one of the points that was raised for, um, that was taken into consideration for our denial, um, of your request. Traffic queuing wasn't the only tantamount issue. Um, there were other issues that, um, came into play as well as, um, the request by our colleague, Mr. Carol, um, for more information that, um, really doesn't play into the traffic queuing issue. And again, um, while I understand going through this exercise and the, the board and the chair affording you the opportunity to, um, present this information. Um, again, I am inclined to not have a, um, mini HCA host community agreement. There it is. It came to me. Host community agreement meeting, um, after we've already made a decision. What I would, um, encourage you to do is to, uh, keep this information, perhaps, uh, study traffic queuing when we get back to the new normal. And, um, the traffic issue is something that's able to be studied, uh, more appropriately to, um, a post-COVID maintaining world, uh, but that, any future board, um, if and when they decide that the host community agreement application process is open again, which it is not right now, we made a decision, um, that, that would be, uh, the time that you, uh, provide this information as well as I understand you're saying you can't have the, um, extensive community outreach, um, portion of it unless this board asks you to. I would disagree. What, you can do whatever you want. Um, so, uh, again, I myself will not be making a motion to reconsider. I think this just should be, um, if I'm allowed in this, some of my colleagues have a different motion. Again, I'm not going to ma- make it right now until the chair, um, has his remarks and questions answered. My motion would be, uh, to move receipt and encourage you to, um, do whatever you think is appropriate due diligence, um, up to the time that this board or a future board opens up the last of the remaining three, uh, applications for a host community agreement. And I just don't agree with this circumvention, um, that I, uh, interpreted as, as this being right now. So, um, thank you, Mr. Chair.
All right. Thank you, Mrs. DeGastino.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I, I appreciate the opportunity and, uh, the time tonight by the board to hear us out.
Thank you. All right. Give us a minute here. This is Chaplin. You can, you're gonna just make it so we just have the board on the webinar function now.
I'm sorry, I'm, I'm not a.
So the board is gonna have a discussion now.
I got it, got it, got it.
We're getting. I don't know what the proper term is. I don't want to say demote.
We're getting demoted.
I apologize. I thought when you said that we were already in the executive session and I'm like, did I fall asleep for 20 minutes?
All right. So I, you know, I, I'm gonna open it to the board now just for where do we go from here? Again, you know, this wasn't set up to restart the process. We just said, because we had had a number of conversations with the applicant and they wanted to give us an update. I did want to at least give them the opportunity to do so. Yeah. Attorney Hime can certainly jump in on this, but the, we have the ability to approve as many community host agreements as we feel. We have the ability to not approve any community host agreements. And then we've had that process. So we can either move receipt, we can come up with a plan for the future or take any more similar motions therefrom. So I will go to Mr. Higgins.
Hey, so I, I, I totally understand me where, uh, uh, my colleague, um, it's, Miss, Mrs. Mahan is coming from on this. It, uh, eh, I'll say for myself, we, what I struggle with, eh, um, in, as a member of the select board, eh, uh, is the, um, rapidity at which we often need to make weighty decisions. It, uh, eh, I, I generally, we like to be taking information, listen to what people say and then go back and think about it for a while and then come back and make a decision. Eh, uh, and, and I think we had, I had the opportunity to, um, sleep on it. Eh, uh, I, I would have voted, I mean, to allow Calix, especially after I pondered some of the comments that were made and particularly by you and Mrs. Corsi, you know, during the, uh, discussion as I was, was, um, well, as I thought about it later on, uh, I was kind of caught up in, 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 um, pretty much, not so much that I felt that East Arlington would be a better location, but, but that I thought that the 2,000 feet was close enough. And I understood, uh, your argument, you know, or the argument that was posed was that he, the previous location was next because it was within 2,000 feet by the way we measured, you know? And so, eh, I appreciated the fact that they went back in an attempt to deal with our concerns. You know, and, and I am not going to move for reconsideration out of respect and an understanding of with what Mrs. Mahan has said. But I will say that if we did vote on it, eh, um, I, I would vote positively for it. Thank you.
Mr. Chair?
This is your question.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Um, so I, I was one of the two votes in favor of, uh, Calix Peak. And, and I, I don't, I, I think if there is going to be a motion for reconsideration, I think two things. One, it, if there is something that has changed in other members' minds, that, that the motion should come from one of the members that was in the majority. But two, if there is going to be reconsideration, I, I think out of fairness, the other applicant that was heard that evening should be notified that there is a reconsideration. If there's anything else that they want to present to the board. So I, I, I put it in favor, Alex Peak on, on the second of, um, we, one week and on, and we had the vote, but I, I, I being in the minority, um, you know, my vote remained, remains the same. But I don't think it's, it's one of the two vote, I, on the side that wasn't successful. I don't think I applied to move for consideration.
And Mrs. Mahan?
Um, thank you, Mr. Chair. Um, first of all, I'd like to make a motion to move receipt, no further action. And I, I just would add to that, that we have one remaining, um, HCA available. It doesn't mean we have to give it out with this current board or this current board in the following year. Um, like my colleagues, I'm all about process and protocol. And, um, for us to, um, begin that process to giving the last, um, HCA means opening the application process again, as Mr. Decorsi stated, uh, giving everybody notice. This applicant, the other applicant that wasn't successful and any other applicants, um, that may be considering it. So, um, that's the reason why I don't think, I'm, I'm not making a motion to reconsider. I'm making the motion to, uh, move receipt and I encourage Calix Peak, um, as well as the other applicant that we did not grant a license to, because as Mr. Diggins spoke to the, uh, proximity to the other East Arlington establishment, we did vote for that they wait until either this current board or a future board, um, takes a vote, makes a decision and takes a vote to, um, open the HCA application. And everyone should follow the same process. So again, I, I would make a, uh, motion, motion to move receipt and no further action.
All right. And Mrs. Higgins, do you have a second on the motion?
I'll, I'll second it for, for, for debate, you know, but I have a, a question, you know? And maybe this is to you, Mr. Heard, you know? What would be, I, I guess I would like to have Mr. Kuro in on this, you know, discussion before we made, you know, any decision, especially a decision that's just going to essentially, um, end the process here. And, uh, and, uh, since he was one of the three of us, you know, in the negative on this. You know, so would, eh, at what point should I ask that we wait for him to be present with us?
So if you're seconding Mrs. Mahan's motion, then we'd be waiting till a, a new, a different meeting to make, take any action on a community host agreement anyways? If that makes sense?
Right, right. But I, I guess my question is if, if we do vote positively for Mrs. Mahan's motion, does that end the process here or could we still bring it up? The, at the next meeting, have a discussion that includes Mr. Kuro and then, and then decide, you know?
But there is no process for community host agreements, but well, what I'm just trying to do here is get thoughts on the board and where we want to go, move forward on this. The last remaining item, we had an applicant that kept in touch with us. So if we want to open a whole new process, that's fine. We don't have to do anything with it. We can just say we're not gonna take any votes on community host agreements for whatever period of time and Attorney Hime could correct me if I'm wrong on that. But we also have gone through the process a few times. And I think what has been crystal clear to me is that with the current zoning bylaws as we have it, there are very few locations. And every time we do go through the process, I think there is a huge administrative burden on particularly Attorney Hime's office as far as taking applicants. But if it's the will of the board to just move receipt and leave it at that, then we're free to do so.
I could, Mr. Chair, um, just to Mr. Diggins', um, points that he raised, if that's okay?
Yep.
Um, Mr. Diggins, wha- what I'm trying to say is the town through the ballot initiative has up to three HCA, um, applications that we can put out. We've done that a couple of times. We've granted two. There's one remaining. There is no requirement that we have to, this current board, give out that third remaining. Um, we had a vote by the board, um, that was three to two. Um, but the other ones that have gone through, I'm pretty sure were unanimous. Um, and I'm, I'm all about process, protocol. To me, this is circumventing the process. We opened up the HCA applications. We heard from two applicants. We, um, indicated by our vote that we didn't approve either one of them. We raised various points with each of the applicants. With Calix Peak, it wasn't just the traffic queuing that they've done the study during the pandemic. Um, we also indicated, Mr. Kiro, our colleague indicated, um, the neighborhoods, neighborhood sentiments around that. Um, and I understand that the Calix Peak applicant is falling back on, um, because their interpretation, uh, of the process that, uh, they can't do a community outreach meeting without a direction from the board, meaning make a motion to reconsider and approve it. I strongly disagree. That should have been their due diligence. To me, with all due respect, that's a cop out. Um, you could say, well, it's not until we get into a certain point in the process that we're required to have neighborhood outreach and community meetings. I agree with that, but to me, a good applicant does that on their own, not because they're directed to. And to me, that goes to the veracity of the application. And again, um, I, I'm really uncomfortable that we're, we opened the HCA applications, we voted. My preference would be, um, there's no decision on Calix Peak. Or anybody else who might want to come in and say, I'd be like a motion for consideration. I hadn't applied, but since you're circumventing the process that you laid out, I'd like a motion for consideration for mine. Again, I, I would like to get back to, we're setting precedent here. And I want to get back to a process that we don't consider Calix Peak, the other applicant that wasn't successful and/or any future applicants in the, that might, um, apply until this current board or a future board says we are now opening the HCA applications for the third and last remaining, um, ballot initiative approved, um, marijuana establishment. So, um, I just don't like this. It's not leaving a good taste in my mouth. Um, it, I'm the kind of like, you play by the rules. Select board opens the HCA application process. Everybody applies. It's a yay or nay. That's it. You don't find a way to circumvent the HCA application process that pretty much the board is establishing right now because the ballot initiative went through and each select board or, or, or city council had established their process. I'd really like to stick to the process and not have this sort of a backdoor thing. So that, that would be my comments on that. I, I, it's, you know, it's an interest of fair play. I, I just don't think this is fair. Um, I think if the other applicant that was denied was told, listen, the board will capitulate and you can come in and ask for a motion to reconsider and totally ignore waiting for the HCA application process to reopen. I think they would have done the same as well as I think it opens the Pandora's box of, um, a company or companies that didn't even apply that says, well, I want to come in for consideration outside of your HCA application process and protocol that you've outlined. So, um, I, I apologize for talking to.
All right. Any additional comments, Mrs. Higgins?
I mean, I understand the point. I mean, my question was just be whether or not we, we wanted to wait until Mr. Kuro could weigh in, in person. And that was it. Eh, uh, so, so, uh, eh, I would like for that to happen, but I'm not adamant about it. We understand, um, Mrs. Mahan's arguments. I mean, I certainly understand yours too, Mr. Heard about, eh, it just, um, uh, being a, a process, I mean, that does take resources, but you know, you know, uh, resources. We, we have the resources to use them. It's also, uh, uh, if I had to, to, I am a process person too. Eh, uh, and, and, uh, uh, eh, I am wary of precedents, you know, uh, and, and, but, but, um, I think I've said all I need to say on this, you know, so, um, I still have anything new to add to it, you know, so. I still have anything new to add to it, you know, so we have the motion. I have seconded it, so I have stopped talking and turned things back over to you, to your chair.
Mr. DeCoursey, anything additional?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chairman, and just a couple of comments, and I think part of the, I understand Mrs. Mahan's concerns. I think part of the issue here too is there aren't, there isn't a clear appeal process or a process to go forward here. And right now, we did take our action when back, a while back, when we didn't vote to grant either move forward with an HCA with either company. I think to me, and I'd offer this as amendment to, to strike no further action, just move receipt, because that's really all that's before us. That they, Calix Peak came in this evening to make a presentation, and we're moving receipt. I don't hear any of the members who are in the majority moving reconsideration. And as I said earlier, if we did go to that stage, I, that fairness for me is if we did go to that stage, the other applicant who was in the same round should be notified, but I think for purposes of what's before us tonight, it's really a receipt of a report rather than any further action for me. So I offer that as a, as an amendment, but I don't offer any further action this evening.
And, Mr. Chair, I would accept that as a friendly amendment, that my motion is solely to move receipt.
Okay. Attorney Hime, do you have anything to add?
No, Mr. Chair, unless there's specific questions from the board.
All right, so we have a motion to receive by Mrs. Mahan, seconded by Mr. Diggins, Attorney Hime.
This is Mahan.
Yes, thank you.
Mr. DeCoursey?
Yes.
Mr. Diggins?
Yes.
Mr. Hurd?
Yes.
Unanimous vote.
That takes us to item number 11 on the agenda for discussion and approval, Black Lives Matter banner display. We have Mr. Curro, who is not with us tonight, and Mr. DeCoursey, who had worked on this presentation for us. So with that, I will turn to Mr. DeCoursey.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and unfortunately, Mr. Caro couldn't be with us this evening, and he was instrumental in putting together the memorandum that's in your agenda packet this evening, and this follows from discussions that we've had since, since June, but I go back to July where there was discussions about the board, whether it was to the town manager, whether it was to the board developing a plan for the display of banners at Town Hall specifically, the Black Lives Matter banner. We also had a discussion in September at the time we voted to remove the Black Lives Matter banner at the end of September. And we talked about developing a plan and really didn't put any specifics to it, since we had the the resolution warrant article hearing prior to the special town meeting, Mr. Kuro and I had gotten together and had attempted to come up with recommendations to the board going forward and things for the board to think about, and those are laid out in the memo. I don't want to read the memo verbatim, but there was four items that we were recommending to the board. And I will go through each one of those and and then we can open it up for discussion. The four items that we were recommending for the board's consideration was one, development of a policy incorporating the longstanding precedent of displaying banners and other symbols in adornments on Town Hall in a temporary recurring manner in conjunction with specific observances or town initiatives in a way that respects the shared nature of public space. The second recommendation for the board's consideration is to consider the customization of any Black Lives Matter banner with the seal of the town and any additional language clarifying this as a statement of values rather than an endorsement of a particular organization. Third, and this goes to the timing, Mr. Caro couldn't be here tonight, that this recommendation actually would call for action between now and our next meeting. We're recommending the prioritization of the annual display of a newly customized Black Lives Matter banner from a date in January preceding the Reverend Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. Birthday observance and continuing through the February observance of Black History Month. And the fourth recommendation, and this flows from the discussion at town meeting, was continuing your public comment about what other steps Arlington could take to reflect the spirit of these actions. So those are the four recommendations, or a number of considerations that we incorporated into the memorandum, which include the relative impact on regularly recurring displays versus a perpetual display, the shared nature of public space such as Town Hall, and significantly, if there is going to be a banner on Town Hall, the requirement that we clearly distinguish any messaging as government speech. So I'm going to offer the, the four recommendations as votes before the board and open it up for discussion through you, Mr. Chair.
All right, and I should have mentioned this before. I did want to just apologize, and I take responsibility for this as a chair to the board and the public. You know, this is a discussion that, this issue, I think, took on a life of its own because of the vote that we took in September. This is a discussion that we should have had parallel with the vote that we took in September, and we just, you know, never got around to doing that in our September meeting when we took the vote to remove the banner. It was always the, our intention that we'd have the banner up and then have a plan in place when we took that vote in September, just for a number of reasons, didn't happen, and I think it would have been a much easier process if we had do that, if we had done that. So I just do want to mention that. With that, I will look to the board for any comments. Mr. Diggins?
Yes, well, I appreciate your apology, but it, I, I, I think it's unwarranted because, because it's to figure out what to do next is going to take a while. It is figuring out how we want to display, whatever we want to display. It's going to take a while, you know, and interestingly, when I was doing some research on behalf of the Rainbow Coalition, I was going through the websites for all of the towns and municipalities in Massachusetts. And there were a couple that had like side committees, and one that actually had a banner committee. You know, I don't have the, I don't have that tile marked down yet, but, but I think it may require me something on that level, you know, to figure out what we're going to do, being about banners of any type, and how we use public property for display of them. And so it, it, there there is a little ambiguity, I think, I mean, on the third one, the third point, let me go back over to that window. So for the display of the banner, from MLK Day through February, through you, Mr. Chair, where are we planning on putting it?
Well, that's certainly a discussion that we're here to have. Of course, did you have?
I did, so for the period between Martin Luther King Day and the end of February, the recommendation is to display the banner at Town Hall.
You know.
But again, it's open to discussion before the board, but that was what Mr. Caro and I had discussed, but opened it up for a full board discussion.
You know, and so, may I continue, Mr. Chair?
Yes.
You know, so we, I, my position on that hasn't changed, you know, and, and so, and, and I think there is no reason to think that we won't find ourselves in a situation similar to where we were in, in the last year, in September, because one of the things that happened is that events going on outside of the town would coincide with the date that we had decided to bring the banner down, and it then looked like we were conceding me to these other events, and not by, by taking a better die.
To clarify that point, when we vote on the policy, we will not have to take another vote to put it up and put it down. So our vote that we take to solidify when and where the banner would hang would be enough guidance for the town manager to know when to display it. So there wouldn't be a subsequent vote in February or in January regarding the banner.
So, so then question to you, Mr. Chair, is that how does that differ from what was deter, was, was voted on last time?
Because we didn't have a policy in place in the town manager or Attorney Hime, correct me if I'm wrong, but, but we are trying, we're essentially taking the votes that we took last June and the votes that we took last September and consolidating them into one vote that we take right now, and it stays in perpetuity until the board takes another vote to change that policy. Attorney Hime?
So, I mean, I think there's a couple of different facets of the policy of what's being proposed. One facet is when and where a specific banner, Black Lives Matter banner, will be displayed in Arlington that's a representative of the select board's government speech. The second piece of it is, I think, a call to revise, and Mr. DeCoursey can correct me if I'm wrong, but revise the overall current banner policies, so that to my, I guess, my anticipation, we're distinguishing between the town's traditional use of banners to advertise a specific event or cultural you know, occurrence, with contrasted that with something that is more of a government speech function on behalf of the select board representing the values of the town of Arlington. I don't want to speak for Mr. Kuro, Mr. DeCoursey, but that's what I anticipate would come out of at least two of the points that Mr. DeCoursey discussed.
Right.
That's right.
And I think, but what I think the answer to your question is and again, correct me if I'm wrong, but we take a vote, we can take a vote right now that says that we, the select board of the town of Arlington, vote to display, and I think what Mr. DeCoursey is saying is that the date that we actually put it up before Martin Luther King, when Mr. Curro comes back, will come back and will designate a specific date. But we'll take a vote to display the Black Lives Matter banner on Town Hall from this date to this date each year until we vote otherwise. So with that, we don't need to go into, in a January meeting each year to vote to put the sign up, and we don't need to vote to take the sign down at the end of February. This is, we're giving the town manager guidance as to when and where to put it up each year and when and where to put, to take the sign down.
And I'll just make one point and a follow up and then stop and let someone else have the floor. So, I'm still not in favor of Town Hall. I mean, I prefer some other location. But my concern about this notion that we're setting a policy, and that's how it's going to be, is that we can change things when we want. And my understanding was that we had an up and down date we determined before. And there was pressure to extend things, and we did. And I have no confidence that, that it won't happen again. And so that would, on top of my just not wanting anything on Town Hall, you know, I just had no confidence, I mean, that, that we would stick to it, you know, because the pressures will come back, you know, so that's it. Thank you.
Mr. Mahan?
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and I agree with Mr. Diggins. Up until this most current conversation, the only banners displayed at Town Hall were announcing Town Day. So sort of a informative community event display, as well as the, I'm not going to remember it right, I'm thinking the Strawberry Festival that the high school music department puts on, and that was it. And I also want to state that I do, when we started this last April, the town manager represented the Human Rights Commission to put up the Black Lives Matter banner on the heels of George Floyd and many other black men and women who have been killed to put that on Town Hall. And the original presentation to this board was that the Human Rights Commission was asking us just for the month of April, which normally we would put pride banners up and down Mass Ave as well as, that's another thing, that's a third entity that we would put on the Town Hall. So we didn't put up the pride banner, we put up Black Lives Matter banner, and the Human Rights Commission through the town manager indicated that in May, they would come back with a recommendation of where and in what way to display the Black Lives Matter banner that was on Town Hall somewhere else in Arlington. It may not be the banner, it may be something else. Then they capitulated on that and said, we need more time. Can you give us till June? And so we waited till June, and then June came, and then a petition started, and then the Human Rights Commission changed to say, no, now we want to say, keep it up there. Keep it up at least until we have the August hearing with the police issue for the community forum discussion. And I agree with Mr. Diggins. I don't know why we keep going back to this. I have no problem with up and down Mass Ave, not just in the center. Why not in East Arlington, the Heights, Black Lives Matter and other displays? But again, you know, we're setting a process, we're setting a precedent in terms of that. To me, banners at Town Hall aren't something that Town Hall should have a banner 12 months out of the year, and I'm not diminishing the message of Black Lives Matter. I would ask, so I'm not in favor of the second part of the motion, the initial one regarding a Black Lives Matter banner at Town Hall. Definitely, it displayed throughout the town, not just the center on the banners that we have that go up and down Mass Ave. But if I could, and again, I really am upset about the fact that the way this was initially presented by the town manager, but basically by the Human Rights Commission totally took the 180 on this and got us down there. I would want to ask Mr. DeCoursey on the second part of the four considerations that you have before us, would you be amenable to customization of any Black Lives Matter banner with the seal of the town and/or any additional language clarifying this as a statement of values rather than an endorsement of particular of a particular organization? And I say that so that my and Mr. Diggins' feelings regarding the banner, that it's an or, because I know that the town has adopted including myself and others, that we have issued a statement that we send out on our town communication that says Arlington values equity, diversity, and inclusion. We are committed to building a community where everyone is heard, respected, and protected. So I just would ask for the and/or in there, and because I, I would need to have more input regarding changing our town seal to recognize Black Lives Matter, because, you know, with all due respect, just coming from my own personal family issues, if we're going to open up the town seal, I certainly want to open it up to disabled, severely autistic, and other individuals who I feel for many, many years have been overlooked. So I guess as a friendly amendment to Mr. DeCoursey.
So I don't think the recommendation is to amend the town seal. It's to brainstorm as to what a new banner would look like, and it would be a banner with the town seal with a statement of value. And, you know, I think a number of times we've A number of times we've had conversations with someone with, uh, I've had conversations with a few people. Where it would be something along the lines of Arlington affirms that Black Lives Matter. It has a way to differentiate, to, to make it clear. That it's a statement of value on behalf of the town rather than any association with any specific group. But I'll let Mr. De Corsi correct me.
No, that's right. And, 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 you know, two things, one. Again, this, and we've been discussing this for a long time. This is an attempt on Mr. Cure's part, my part to bring something back before the board. Because frankly, as Mr. Heard said, nothing has been brought back in terms of what our plan is. And when I say nothing, we haven't developed a, a, a plan. So this is in response to. The discussions that took place over the summer, the discussions that took place in the fall. And, and the, uh, the Warren article hearing on the resolution and the actual vote of, of town meeting. Um, and, and it is not a proposal. For a permanent sign at Town Hall and, and that's one thing. That within the memo itself, there is this discussion about the impact of recurring displays versus perpetual displays and, and. My feeling is that that's a, at a certain point in time and, and here. Between the Martin Luther King Junior Birthday and, and the end of February. That would be the time if we are going to put up the banner, that would be the time to do it and the time to reflect. What actions we've taken as a community. Over the past year where we still need to go as a community and, and, and to move forward. So I, I just want to be clear. It's not. And this is, again, is for discussion before the full boards. I'm not going, I bet it, it's not something. That there is a proposal to, to do something permanently. As, as to the friendly amendment, we had a discussion. Whether the town seal or additional language in addition to the town seal. I note that there are two other communities that have a Black Lives Matter banner on their city halls. Both of them have their city seals. That's the precedent. The precedent for the additional language is the Black Lives Matter banner or the two of them that are in front of Arlington High School. Let's say we believe. Black Lives Matter. Um, I don't have a problem with the indoor, but it's, it's Mr. Heard said, this isn't. An attempt to change the town seal. It's just distinguish this as, as government speech and we had heard from Attorney Heim. Previously on that, um, in terms of what is government speech and, and what, um, the implications of that are. So. I, I just want to try to be clear, uh, on, on those two points.
Okay. And through you, Mr. Chair, to that, I'm just looking at. If we vote, if we vote to move receipt of this, um, correspondence from my colleagues, Mr. Kuro, Mr. De Corsi. I'm fine with that, but if we vote the four. Recommendations that we're being asked to consider. Someone could hold us to that language that says you say in here. Uh, about changing the town seal, about having a Black Lives Matter banner on Town Hall for two months. Starting at the first week of January to the end of February. So. If, um, we're, we're going to move to receive this and, and continue on. Either through Mr. De Corsi, Mr. Careo or two other board members to. Make some suggestions in the future. I'm, I'm just thinking that the role that we got down here, if we outnumber vote. These four, um. Bulleted items that are under consideration. We are committing to some of the things that I'm hearing. We're saying, no, we're not committing to that in terms of changing the sound town seal. Having a banner on Town Hall whether for, uh, two days or two months. So I guess I would ask Mr. De Corsi, um. And/or any of my other colleagues, what is your preference on the vote that should go before us? If it's moving receipt, I'm fine with that, but if it's something else, I'd like to hear that.
I, and, Mr. Chairman, if I could just respond just to the seal idea. And again, I want to reiterate. There is no recommendation against the town seal and, 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 and what that language was and, and, you know, maybe it's not clear enough is. Is that if we do have a new, if we do have a banner regardless of where it is in town. That the town of Arlington seal is on it. It's not incorporating that as, as the official seal. It's taking our existing seal. As, as far as, I mean, this is a lot to put before the board this evening. Not all of us are here tonight and, and I think given, given the comments, I think. You know, maybe, maybe receipt is, is, is all, all that, um. That, that we should be doing this evening because I, I don't think, um, you know, without, without all five members without. Further time to maybe take a look at this. It's, it's that, that's, um, the best way for us to go for purposes of tonight.
I would second that.
So.
Yeah, I, I'm not making it as a motion, but you know, if you want to move, move.
I'll move receipt.
So I just want to, I'll step in and just clarify what I feel we. Are doing here, what we should be doing here. Is, you know, we've had many, many discussions on this. We've had. A ton of public input. We've had the town and. Around the fall, it became time to come up with a permanent plan for the banner. In response to the consistent public. Input that we've had. We, at that time, I think ma- made a decision that we wanted to. Go through our special town meeting. Let them weigh in on the subject. Then we would consider the vote at town meeting and certainly, you know, this is within the purview of the select board. But we consider that vote among. A number of other competing. Aspects of the, this situation that we had to consider. And I think it's a come, incumbent upon us now to come up with a plan and I agree that. Without Mr. De, without Mr. Curro here. It may be wise to push this to another, to the next meeting. But I, I, I don't think this isn't, certainly isn't something that I would like to, particularly with the timeframes. In where we are in. The year that I would like to push out in perpetuity. I think we, this is something that we would come up with and. Resolve at our next meeting if, if not tonight. And, you know, I, I, again. We've had a lot of public input. We've had a lot of vocal public input at our meetings, people that wanted the banner to remain. We've had, I, I know everyone has had. Public input from people that have called them privately and said that they don't want the banner on Town Hall. For various reasons, some people disagree with the message of the banner. Some people just, again, don't like. To see banners on Town Hall as Mr. Diggins has said many times. But, but we have had, I think enough between the town meeting and the input that we've received enough to. You come to a consensus that there are, are a lot of residents in town that would like to see. Us take action and have a, some sort of a permanent policy. Where we, we can display the banner and come if not on Town Hall and then come up with. Another way that we could. That we could. Push for the statement of Black Lives Matter and, you know, I think this is something that we do need to take up and we need to resolve and so we can move forward. And we can continue with the community conversations and all the work that we've done in the past few years. So I personally, I, I am fine with the recommendations. I'm fine with the, with the timeframe. That has been suggested by Mr. Corsi and Mr. Curro. Um, and I think we can come up with a sign that. Accomplishes all of our goals and supports the policy statement that we have all five of us. And the town staff have re- reiterated many times over the, the, the past few years that. We're reviewing racial injustice in institutional, structural, personal race and individual racism that still exists in town. And it's something that we need to keep working at and that, that's, you know, what we're trying to do here. So I, I, I had. As a. I, I mean, I don't know if it's right. Now for where the, the, the discussions are going, but. You know, I, I think that the, the limited. Period suggested by Mr. De Corsi, Mr. Curro is fine. I did want to just put before the book, board for thought. Now I'm going to attempt to screen share, so. Hopefully I don't have any embarrassing private information that's about to go public, but.
You don't have it anyway, so we don't have to worry about that, you know, just show us here.
Let me see if I. Just want to make sure that this is up. Just something for consideration. This is, and can you see this? Can you see the photo? Did you do it appropriately?
Yeah.
So this is a flag pole that's in the Winchester Town Common. So just for consideration as we move forward with the decision. If we did want to have a, you know, a statement of values. Somewhere in town, we do have a flag poll at, poll at Uncle Sam Plaza. So it, it is something to consider what are, that our neighboring town is doing. So it, it's the flag. There's a Black Lives Matter sign and then there's a rainbow flag right below it that I, I assume they. They're flying indefinitely. So I just wanted, again, you know, we're not, doesn't look like we're going to have a motion on, on this at this particular meeting, but. Just as we consider where we go and how we can best. You solidify. Our, our values regarding these issues to residents in the public that passed through Arlington. I, I think this is one. Idea that, that we could take a look at.
Mr. Mr. Chairman, I offer something?
Yes.
I, I'm, I'm mindful of the fact that it's not my place to weigh in on the substantive debate. But there, there's one thing that I want to note with respect to this question about the town seal. Um, and, and maybe this is mostly for public education rather than for the board's edification. The, under the law for a long time. If. You had a process like the board had where you put up a sign or a banner or a flag. The idea was that this is sort of neutral space and anybody who's applying gets to put it up. And it created this tension where it's like, if we allow any types of flags or banners or signs. Then we have to allow all of them, right? If we put up a sign. You know, uh, you know, in the city of Boston, um, case, the shirt left case, the question became. Uh, somewhat similar to the picture you just showed, Mr. Heard. Uh, the city of Boston flies the city of Boston flag, the United States flag, and then it has a third flag pole in City Hall Plaza. That sometimes it swaps out for various different things. Sometimes it raises flags of other. Uh, nations to celebrate cultural and, uh, culture and heritage of specific, uh, uh, folks. Sometimes it raises, uh, flags that, uh, like a rainbow flag. Sometimes it raises flags that have. A more distinct and discreet message. Um, and the, uh, plaintiffs in that case wanted the city of Boston to raise. Basically a flag affirming Christian values and they, they, they did this under the pretense that. You were applying to put our flag up too, and you can't say no because you put all these other flags up. And what the First Circuit decided, and this was only relatively recently, 2019. Was that the government gets to engage in speech. And the government gets to say that we have some messages as a government, because if we allow all messages, then we have no message as elected leaders. And without advocating a position as to what the board should do. The idea behind the, ha- having the town seal or some other imprimatur of the board's authority. Is to make a distinction between saying, here's something that the board is just saying. You know, somebody applied to put up this event sign. We're, you know, fine. It meets our criteria and we're advertising the Arlington Arts Festival or the Feast of the East. Versus this is something that the select board is saying is a statement. On behalf of the select board and it has the town seal or some other form of making it clear. That this is distinguished from the speech that somebody else may be trying to engage in on government property. And I ju- just want to make that clear for the public because that's sort of what we're talking about, whether the town seal is the right idea or not the right idea. The idea is, is to make it clear that this is when the government is speaking. This is when the select board is speaking as opposed to, this is when the select board said, okay, you checked all the boxes. We get to put up, uh, you know, the. You know, a 5K run for, for a different cause, you know, banners, uh, throughout town. So I, I hope that's somewhat helpful in terms of setting the table. For future discussions, even if it's just helped the public's understanding. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Diggins.
Thank you, um, thank you, Mr. Chair, and thank you, um, Mr. Heim. That was helpful, you know, and, and, and I, I understand that. And I, I support it and I just want to prepare us though that when we do that, eh, we're going to have some explaining to do. Eh, because I think for a lot of people, uh, that subtlety is going to be missed. I mean, that is going to be. Uh, interpreted in ways that we aren't going to find favorable. I'm fine with doing it, but just be prepared me that we're, we're going to have to, uh, do some explaining to people and, and hopefully it'll get through to those who. Have open ears. I mean, I suspect there'll be those who don't have open ears and we'll just never get through, but that's okay, you know? I, I would like it that when we did deal with them, that we break these, break these up in the four and maybe have four votes. It, um, I'm easily in favor of one and four. And, and I also want to encourage us, you know, to, to be willing to spend some time, uh, uh, dealing with one. It, uh, four is, is, is a long going. Process as well as should be, you know, uh, uh, but with one, I mean, sometimes when we're trying to, we come up with policy. We, we try to do it fast, I mean, and, and because we just want to get it done, but let's be prepared to spend some time with it and, and engage the community on it. Uh, I liked your idea of Mr. Heard, you know, uh, with respect to the flag, you know, I'm glad, glad to see us thinking kind of. More prominent places because be one of my ideas was to maybe have, you know. Black light, what similarly to the way that we do the pride of stripes being a crosswalk. In front of Town Hall, we could do maybe Black Lives Matter in, uh, in, in the crosswalk. I mean, a little bolder for me and maybe even a conjunction was to take the banner and maybe string it, I mean, across the major intersection. Uh, Pleasant Street and, uh, and, and Mass Ave, just something really bold. Uh, really big eh, out there, uh, so that eh, more people will see it eh, so, uh, but. So he's, let's spend some time on these things, you know, and, 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 and we should get, I'll suggest that we, we separate them up in. For, I mean, it's all a vote, but I think it'll allow us to eh, maybe make our points a little more clearly amongst each other into the public. Thank you.
All right. And that's certainly fine. I, I mean, I, I don't know that there's a. Much other than vote to commit to number four. Number one, I think we, we can separate out as a separate agenda item and, and just discuss what the process would be and then. Two and three, I think are really. One item that you could consolidate once we come back to try to figure out what we're going to do on those two items.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Any additional comments? We have a motion to receive by. Mrs. Mahan. Seconded by Mr. Diggins.
Yes.
That sound right?
Yeah. Turn it high. I don't know if I did, but I will second, so.
Mr. Chair, you ready?
Yes.
Mrs. Mahan.
Yes, thank you.
Mr. De Corsi.
Yes.
Mr. Diggins.
Yes.
Mr. Heard.
Yes.
Unanimous vote.
Thank you. All right. So we, before we go into executive session, we have new business. So Attorney Heim. You are muted.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I do, I do have one brief bit of new business. Uh, I received, uh, a terrific news from, uh, Representative Garbley today. He called and let me know that the, uh, well, if other folks are going to speak to this, I'll just be quiet.
No.
Okay. Uh, he called and let me know that the, uh, senior, uh, means tested tax relief. Had passed to the House and he's keeping a close eye on the Senate, but it's, uh, expected to, to pass because if it doesn't, it's, it's got to come back again next session. So. Um, that's great news, uh, for, uh, seeing through what started with this board's initiative to provide. Uh, seniors in Arlington, um, with, uh, some means tested tax relief. Grateful to, uh, obviously our legislative delegation, uh, but also their staff who. Alongside with Senate and House Counsel have worked on some tweaks to the. Legislation that were, uh, necessary for the Department of Revenue standpoint. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Chaplain.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Uh, I just have one piece I'll share, um, and it's very good news. Uh, our local health department has partnered with the health departments in Lexington, Belmont and Watertown. To collectively be able to distribute vaccine to first responders. So starting next week with Arlington as the lead, we will be setting up clinics and we'll start. Providing vaccines to our police officers, firefighters and public safety dispatchers. So collectively, uh, over that week's time, uh, we'll hopefully. So collectively, uh, over that week's time, uh, we'll hopefully be vaccinating, uh, 580 employees across all four of those towns. Uh, so I know it's been long awaited, but officially next week, we will begin sta- starting to vaccinate our tier one or our phase one employees. So I think that's very positive news for the community.
Excellent. That is good news. All right, Mrs. Mahan.
Um, I, I just want to thank town council for bringing up, um, the, uh, means tested se- senior citizen property tax exemption. From what Attorney Hyam sent, said, I'm hearing the same thing in terms of the House and Senate. I'm just keeping my fingers crossed that, uh, the governor signs it. I would have one question on the town manager, um, regarding his new business. Is this, um, regional, uh, vaccination program with Arlington and other communities? Is that something that we're doing within our own framework? Or is that something we're doing in concert with the, um, State Department of Public Health that provides a program as long as you're vaccinating at least 200 employees and more, they can give you some resources?
So it, it's that program that you just mentioned in coordination with the DPH. The, the reason that we are partnering is to get to that qualifying level where they will provide you with vaccine.
Okay. And I definitely want to commend our town manager, Mr. Chaplin and Christine Conley, our, um, Director of Health and Human Services for, um, getting that up and running, really with very little notice, let alone a designated matrix or framework to do that. And I just would look forward to, I might be too ambitious at the next meeting, but, um, the second part of the governor's press conference today spoke to, um, mass sites where the next tier of individuals, um, could go, uh, to be vaccinated. So, um, I'm glad we have this inroad with the state, uh, program that is provided for our first responders, um, who are willing to take it. None of this is mandatory. Um, so I definitely feel comfortable that, um, Arlington is also, uh, placing itself to take advantage of the second launch, um, which will be, I think I miss it by a year or two. I'm a little too old and I'm too, a little too young to get in for senior hours. I'm stuck in that 55 to 60 range, but, um, um, I, I really am appreciative of the fact that, um, our town officials, starting with the town manager, are really staying on top of, um, what the state is providing through the Department of Public Health, through the Command Center, through M I S and all the other acronyms. Um, and just finding a way to take advantage of that, not only state, but, but federal funding. And my last new business would be to ask Attorney Hyam, when one of us makes a motion to go into executive session tonight to conduct strategy with respect to a pending litigation, the second half of that motion I'm asking is, would it be? And when the board comes out of executive session, it will be to adjourn, or when the board comes out of executive session, it will be to take a vote and then adjourn?
Uh, you can, uh, thank you, Ms. Mahan. Uh, it's a good question. Uh, we can adjourn in executive session. So as long as it's, it's, it's broadcast that we're not coming back in open session. We can, that should be part of the entry motion.
Thank you, Charlie Hyam. And thank you, Mr. Chair. I just, my head wasn't figuring out where to go there. No, no, no further new business.
Thank you. Mr. Diggins?
Uh, two quickies. It, uh, I, I took a walk down, um, Studieside Avenue, uh, yesterday, deep down the street and all of it was on the sidewalk, you know, which is the first time I've done that. Usually I have to walk in the street a bit because it didn't have a, a good sidewalk. They did a good job, you know, uh, so thanks to DBW on that. And this is legit new business. Uh, that is for next meeting. Uh, I would like to have on the agenda, uh, discussion about uh, a desire on my part to put in, uh, articles, uh, to create a committee to study eh, how we go about creating the youth, eh, young adult advisory committee. Eh, so, uh, please, please, um, do that for me.
Okay.
Thanks.
We're in with Charlie Hyam for that. This is a coursey.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just very briefly and, and just something is actually since COVID, I mean, we, uh, one of my walking paths takes me through Monotomy Rocks Park and, um, Hills Pond. And I, I saw something yesterday that while nothing, um, nothing bad happened, it, it, it was a little bit scary that there's some people out on the ice, um, there. And it's, it's a real danger right now. And, and the police department tweeted about that yesterday. Um, and, and Hills Hill might be the, Hills Pond might be the only pond that has some ice on it right now. It doesn't have it near the edges, but if you see somebody out there, please warn them because it has not been cold enough to support, to support that type of use. And I appreciate the police department putting that, that warning out to people because it's just that, you know, a few, few days with slightly below freezing temperatures, when it goes above freezing, um, it, it's, it's not a good situation. So, um, just, just, uh, something that we saw by the time we came around the pond, the people were off, but it was, it, it just is, um, it's that time of year where the, the ice may look like it's, it's good. It isn't. And, and please stay off it. So I have, I've, it's just something that really struck me. Yes, and I was glad nothing happened.
Well, I learned to skate so fast on Spy Pond when you skating, and all of a sudden you hear the, the ice crack below you. Not, not to make, make light of a serious situation. All right. No new business for me. Um, so with that, so for our next, the next item on our agenda, we have an executive session for the purpose of conducting a strategy session with respect to impending litigation, a public discussion of which would be detrimental to the town's position. Before we entertain a motion to such effect, I note that upon the advice of counsel, providing detail on the subject of this executive session would be itself detrimental to the board's discussion of its posture and the town's ultimate position. And further that unless otherwise moved by a member of the board, we will adjourn this meeting from our executive session and shall not return to open session. With that, is there a motion to enter exec- executive session on such terms into adjourn the meeting from executive session? Mrs. Mahan?
So moved.
Mr. Corsi?
Second.
All right. Any comments, Mr. Diggins?
No comments. Thank you.
Yeah, with that, Attorney Hyam?
Mrs. Mahan.
Yes, thank you.
Mr. De Corsi?
Yes.
Mr. Diggins?
Yes.
Mr. Heard?
Yes. Thank you.